The Haitian community that aren't here because there's a funeral. One of our sisters passed away last week and they're having a large funeral up the street. So you might see some people coming in a little bit later. But today, I really wanted to get together with our community here in Greenville, here in Norwich. We've been out putting flyers everywhere, not just in the Greenville area, but throughout Norwich, everywhere that we can possibly talk to people, meet people, and let them know what's going on in our community and how they can get involved with the community. We invited, this is November 5th. Thank you. This is November 5th, the last weekend before elections. You can register to vote up until November 7th, I believe. So please, if you're not registered to vote, get registered so that you can vote. And today, on the last weekend, these political leaders decided to be here with us to listen to what are the causes, what type of gaps do we have in our community that they can address. So I'm just giving them an opportunity to not just listen to what you guys have to say, but also for us to hear who they are so that they can make an introduction. Really just say your names, what seat you're campaigning for, what are the causes or commitments that you have made to the community for when you get your seat. And I'm just gonna go down the road this way, so there's no, you know, who's first or last. And I'll meet you on the other side.
You're gonna meet the microphone on the other side. Okay. I'm Kevin Ryan. I'm a state rep from the 139th district. That's in this new reconfiguration due to redistricting will be Monville, Nodge, and Potte-Ledged. I have been a legislator for a number of years, serving on the Public Health Committee, the Appropriations Committee, the Environment Committee. We have done a lot to work with the communities to address the needs that we see here on a social level. And I've worked particularly hard in healthcare. I've worked in a clinic in Bridgeport for a number of years, so I have, and I've taught at the University of New Haven for a number of years as well. So obviously, education and public health are two of my main concerns, making sure people have accessible, affordable healthcare, a vital component for anybody as they try to do their work in the community to help themselves and to help the economy. And I'm looking forward to hearing what the major issues here in Greenville, an area that I've been well associated with over the years, even before I was a state legislator. It's a very vital part of this city of knowledge. And I've been to many other events, and it's great that you have an organization that's really going to incorporate and bring the neighborhood together to help yourselves. So thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pietro Rocca Marrella. I am here, first time ever in office, running for office for the 19th district senate seat. I come from another country, just like many of you. This is my home. This city is where my four children are born. Now we have seven grandkids. Naples, Italy, Norwich, Connecticut. That's the connection. Many of you were born in foreign countries as well. What we're gonna do when we go to Hartford is reassert our rights, reassert our demands, reassert our needs. It's not gonna come from Hartford to here, it's gonna come from here to Hartford. We have to have the courage to say it. We have the courage to stand for it. I can envision the pastor, we need young kids to do youth activity. There's gonna be some program that we have to, through the churches, we have to support. Kids have to have a place to go, fun things to do, not on their own. Parents have to be consulted with. Not the Department of Education tells the parents what to do. The parents will tell the Department of Education, this is what we want. We want our kids to learn what the parents want their kids to learn. Other things, it's up to the parents. On November 8th, it is mandatory that we exhort each other, your neighbors, your family. We gotta change direction. We seen this bad movie too many times. They get elected, they go into office, and two years later, they'll come back for your votes again and again and again. Enough is enough. Never been in politics in my life. I've been a small business owner. As a matter of fact, this very building is where my studio used to be. I sold it to the pastor and his lovely wife, and they made a church out of it, which I am completely proud of. They are just beginning. Their vision is just being established, and we're gonna go forward with your help, with your vote, and God's grace, we're gonna do this. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'll be brief. I'm Dave Noakowski. I'm a first-time candidate. I'm running in the 47th district, which encompasses a little bit of Norwich and seven other towns to the north. I'm an NFA grad. I live in Lisbon. My wife and I and our four kids, we run a small campground in Lisbon, and we try to do a lot for the community. I'm on the Board of Ed. I'm a former teacher. My focus is on anything that involves education from pre-K right up through affordable college, and looking to do whatever I can with the fine folks here from Norwich that'll be representing you, hopefully up in Hartford. All I can say is, I won't push, I'm not gonna push you, I'm hoping voter turnout is what it needs to be. And I know you guys have worked so hard today to get people here today. And you look around, you see the people who care are the people who are here. And I think we've really gotta get the word out as far as voting, whoever your candidate is. If I see a very high voter turnout, I'll be happy, whatever the results are, because I know the people got out to vote, and the people got their friends out to vote. So all I can say is, get your friends out to vote, whatever your perspective might be. Unfortunately, you guys are the people who care, and it's a small turnout here today. I was hoping to be more. It's the same thing on Tuesday. A small turnout doesn't benefit anybody. The more people get out to vote, the more people that are eligible to vote, that can vote, the better. So I'll turn things over, but thanks again for having me.
So good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to see you all. I'm Kathy Austin. I'm the senator from the 19th district, and I represent the towns of Marlborough, Hebron, Lebanon, Columbia, Sprague, Franklin, Norwich, Lisbon, Ledgerd, and a part of Monville. I also, my district encompasses and surrounds the lands on the two federally recognized tribes' reservations, and I've done a lot of work with them. So one of some of the things that I've already been working on, let's just talk about the city of Norwich for a half a second. In the city of Norwich, we were desperately short of what is called education cost-sharing dollars. Education in Norwich is extremely important. And every year, the Norwich educational system was coming up with a deficit. And so I've been able to bring back more than $2 million. And this year, for the first time in a very long time, the education system had a surplus in the services that it was providing for students in Norwich. I also, that's one thing. Another thing is, is the city of Norwich was not receiving the correct amount of what is called payment in lieu of taxes or pilot funding and the Mash and Tuckett Pequap Fund. I've been able to bring back more than $2 million, which helps out with the taxes in the city of Norwich and allows them to do the things that need to happen in Norwich, like good sidewalks, good roads. And those are things that are extremely important to communities. I've also worked with the Norwich Public Utilities to eliminate a tax that was encompassed in the Norwich Public Utilities. And they say, Norwich Public Utilities says, that they will be able to decrease for their businesses that use their natural gas, about $1 million, that that will make a big difference for them. That's what they say. And how did I get that? Well, I met with Norwich Public Utilities. And how did I get the information about the Norwich Board of Education? I meet with the superintendents. I actually meet with all the superintendents in all 10 towns that I represent, all town managers and mayors and first selectmen in all 10 towns that I represent. I also meet with businesses. I, along with Representative Ryan, are the chairs of the Eastern delegation, and that is both Democrats and Republicans. And we go to businesses every year, talk to them, find out what policies that they would like to see happen. Last year, we met with Electric Boat, the Eastern Workforce Investment Board, Pfizer, Dominion, and the two tribal nations, the Coast Guard Academy and the Sub Base. Many people who work at the Sub Base and who work at the Coast Guard Academy live in our area. They, by meeting with them, in particular with Electric Boat and the Eastern Workforce Investment Board and the Eastern Advanced Manufacturing Alliance, we were able to put about $1.4 million in additional training dollars for the manufacturing pipeline. The manufacturing pipeline has brought 2,500 good-paying jobs to the region, good-paying jobs to the region. And that is an employer-driven program. And it's also what is called a portable and scalable program. And we are transferring it over, not only continuing it with the manufacturing pipeline, but before I move on from that, let's just say that we've also expanded it into traditional high schools. It's now in 18 traditional high schools to include Norwich Free Academy. And it's in four of our junior high schools. Four junior high schools, including Teachers &amp; Kelly. As a matter of fact, I went there the other day and saw two young people using virtual methods to look at different programs that are out there that can see what an opportunity may be for them in manufacturing. Being a portable, scalable program, it's also allowed to be used in the medical field for nursing, those in the home care industry, LPNs, RNs, social workers. We are able to use this program across the board in many different experiences. And not being satisfied with just doing that, I went down to Danbury and met the folks who are called CTLEAD. And many of you have met Maria and Lucas Pimentel. So I went down to Danbury and I talked with them. They had a wonderful program in Danbury. I said, this is exactly what we need in Norwich that will expand our diversity. They came up here. We've had many programs to include small business programs through the Spanish-American Merchants Association, the SBA sector, and NCDC, and a number of other organizations that came in and resulted in loans to minority-based businesses in the Norwich area to help them expand their business. That's, I consider, a win-win program for us. And LEAD not only is interested in helping out businesses, they also work to help out in education. They had a 5,000, a program with 5,000 tablets that went around to students across the board, helping them out with electronics that maybe their parents can't afford. And for, that allowed them, and they went across the board. They've also been at the charter school here in Norwich, and they've expanded into Monville and Sprague to expand the tablet program there. They also have it in Danbury, and I went down to a ribbon cutting in Bridgeport where LEAD is, where they had over 300 people, and nobody had ever seen 300 people in Bridgeport, the largest city in the state, working together to expand these programs. I'm also the, I am the Chair of Appropriations. I'm the Chair of Public Safety. I am on the Transportation Committee. I'm on the Veterans Committee. I'm on the Regulations Review Committee. I'm on the Legislative Management Committee, and I'm on General Law. In that capacity, I have done hundreds and hundreds of bills that the citizens in my district have asked me to put forward. Because not only do I meet with elected officials from each town, I don't think that there has been an event in this city that I haven't been to at one time or another, because that way, I can meet people. And that's the best thing. So what are things that I'm looking forward to doing? So we have more work to do. We have more work to do on eliminating income tax on pensions and annuities. Right now, there's a cliff. After $75,000 for an individual or $100,000 for a married couple, it cliffs off. We want to extend that, so that it's, we're really getting rid of income taxes on pensions, annuities, and Social Security. Not only, that is all pensions, state employee pensions, teachers' retirement pensions, and other pensions, and other 401K that are available. So that is one thing. I have a personal issue that I have been working on for years, well before I was a legislator. And that is the number of people that are chronically mentally ill that are currently incarcerated. It's a mission of mine to make sure that we are no longer incarcerating those people that are chronically mentally ill. Years ago, the federal government made a decision to close psychiatric facilities across the country. And when they closed psychiatric facilities, then-Governor Roland said, "We're gonna close it," but they didn't put the money into supportive housing. And they didn't put in the money for wraparound services. And since I've been up in the legislature, and even before I was in the legislature, I testified and asked for programs to be done. Now, I'm able to put money in. We put $150 million into mental health care in the budget this year. And I have a bill in that is being worked on right now to provide the exact numbers of the people that are incarcerated or in probation or parole that are chronically mentally ill. And what is a chronic mental illness? Well, just like diabetes and cardiac issue, some people are schizophrenics, or they have other forms of mental illness that have not previously been identified. And I have been working within the Department of Correction to identify those people and provide them the resources so that they can be successful. I went down to New Haven to go to a group home for folks who are chronically mentally ill. They were all schizophrenics. And they keep them at this group home even though they have finished their term, because there is not enough housing for them to transfer into. And if they transfer to housing that is not appropriate for them, they end up going back into prison because there is not enough resources. So that is a personal issue of mine. I also have done an awful lot of work on sexual abuse. I started doing that before I was in the legislature. I worked on what is called Megan's Law. And Megan's Law is the sex offender registry. And I worked on that because I had a family member who was sexually abused. And so I knew exactly what it was like for a family to go through the process and go through, talking with police departments and going through the court system. I then worked on, when I got up into the legislature, on what is called Aaron's Law. And Aaron's Law is a program that teaches young people on safe touch and unsafe touches, and lets them know that they can have boundaries on what people can do to them, and they can report it, and we can make sure that they're safe. That's an important piece of legislation. It's also a national piece of legislation. If you look up Erin Merron on Facebook, you'll see the number of states that she has worked in. And she's actually interested, and she emailed me, because she's very interested in moving to the state of Connecticut. And I think that that would be wonderful. She's moving out of Chicago. And she tells her story like no other, no other one can tell her story. She was sexually abused by a neighbor, and she has been successful in getting this law passed in almost every state in the Union and is now working with other countries. That's a strong woman. That's a real strong woman. Now, I could talk forever, because I think we need to talk about the budget. Because in the budget, this was a human services budget that we passed, and this human services budget put money in for cities and towns that they had asked for. That I had met with them, and my colleagues had met with them, to find out what they needed for services, for programs. We worked on group homes to make sure that they were getting appropriate pay for workers who had not been getting the appropriate pay. We worked with nursing home workers to make sure they were getting the appropriate pay and benefits and healthcare. Healthcare needs to be one of the number-one programs. We also expanded healthcare for young people who may not be documented, who need healthcare. And we expanded it to go up to the age of 12, and we are going to expand it again to go up to 15 and then 18. There's no reason why no, why any child should not get the healthcare that they need, no matter their status. We need to make sure that kids are taken care of, and that is something that is very important. We also put money in, and we all know that today's world is difficult, and we have many people that are coming here that are refugees. And we put in money in the budget to help refugees get settled here and make sure that they had a place to live. We provided them with opportunities to find a job. We made sure that the apartment was not a blank space, but someplace where they could actually have a couch and pots and pans and dishes. This is important to everybody, because we need to make sure people are safe. Again, my name is Kathy Austin. I've been the state senator in the 19th district, and I am very pleased to be here today. Thank you very much.
I'm Robert Bell. I'm running for the 46th district, House of Representatives. It is now an open seat. The incumbent decided not to run again. Anyway, the 46th district is just Norwich, and it's most of Norwich, not all of Norwich. As far south and east as you can go, all the way up into Greenville, up to about 7th Street, up Boswell Avenue to about 7th Street, all the way down Washington until you get to Bacchus Hospital, and all the way west until you hit 395. So if you are in those areas there, that's the 46th district there. So I own a property management company right here in Norwich. I primarily hire Norwich residents as employees, not that that is the requirement, but that's typically how I hire, so that their income can stay here in the city of Norwich as well, and the tax base stays here also. So we offer all kinds of different services, property management, snow removal, landscaping, short- and long-term rental management. And of course, not being in office currently, there, I am limited on how I can support my community. And how I do that, I do that by offering free services, snow removal and landscaping services to disabled and elderly folks, just so many per year, people who can't do it themselves, or maybe even just can't afford it. And also, I do open my wallet to places such as Norwich Bullybusters, because they're here. We appreciate that, so I'm gonna call them out. Anyway, so some things I'm gonna, I would like to focus on if elected in the next couple of days here, November 8th. First and foremost is easier and more affordable access to mental health services. Now, I did get to meet with a bunch of our nonprofits such as Reliance Health and TVCCA. And one of the big issues there is their workload versus their pay rate. So we have many people who have the job of someone who has a master's degree getting paid just a little over minimum wage. And so we have to focus on our most vulnerable community members. If we can focus on their health and then bringing them up, then we really do well for the rest of us. And where we need to start there is to make sure that those who are caring for that community directly are properly compensated and properly have the resources that they need to do that job, so that they can do it effectively. One more thing that we haven't heard here today is crime. We have to get tough on crime. We had one more shooting in downtown just yesterday afternoon. And you know, and that's, there are, that's a multifaceted solutions to these different things. Mental health access, services, services access is one. Another, we have to give our police officers the resources that they need to do their job. Two years ago, we passed a police accountability law, which although it did add many great items to the law, we've taken away a lot of the ability for our police officers to do their job properly. And we, and I intend to fight hard to bring those back, so that we can, we can create, help create a stronger and safer community for all of us. And I'm just gonna go ahead and close, because I don't have 20 minutes to do this. As a veteran, I was in the Navy, six years. I know what it means to serve and to serve honorably. As a business owner, I know what it means to be fiscally responsible, bear the burden of taxes, and to manage payroll. And as a father, I understand what it means to prepare for the future, so that we, so that we can create better opportunities for our children and our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, can I just interrupt for a minute?
Oh, sure.
No.
Got into my time.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So Kanye West, Tanya Taylor Swift.
I'm really sorry. This is just a parking issue. Any cars that are parked in the lot next to the church, could you kindly move your vehicle to the street or to overflow parking at Norwich Utilities? Because we have, pastor says there's no permission to the church for parking there. Sorry. No, just this one where I'm pointing. Just the parking lot where I'm pointing.
Killing me. Killing me.
Like, what about if it has a, like, a car? Oh, that's fine. Oh. Yeah. We're in my car.
No, 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 yeah, I can, I can.
I'm parked right here. Yeah, we're parked right here. Come here over here, just give me one second.
I was gonna sing, but okay.
So anybody that, Mr. Mark Adams, we still have one more representative that's going to speak. So I'm sorry for the interruption, but we had to make the parking announcement, because we don't want to get our neighbors mad at us, and we don't want you guys to get mad when you go outside on a Saturday and your car's towed. You feel me? So, sorry, Mr. Adams, about that. Okay? Here you go.
Do you want me to sing for you? Because I never know how to hold these microphones, so I just, while we're waiting for the time. And any Lou Rawls fans here? Anybody like Lou Rawls? You'll never find another candidate like me. Someone to represent you the way I will. I'm just, I'm just playing right now. But we'll wait for people to come back and give everybody the opportunity to listen. Not to me sing. No problem.
Just so everybody knows, Mr. Wilson had made a commitment to bring 10 young people to a college tour and is unable to make it. It is not something that he wanted to do. He had a commitment with these, he did want to take these 10 young people, they're going to go to college, and he is taking them up to a college to have a tour. So that's why he is not here today.
I was gonna make that announcement at the end, because he took his Sunday off, met with me at 8:00 in the morning, and went around to different churches just on the flip, because that's what I was doing on Sunday. And he said, "Hey, if you want, I'll keep you company." So, so he's not here, because he's doing a lot of things in the community, and that's just who he is. And I also complained to him, and I said, "I want to hear more about what you do in the community, because it goes unsaid, and a lot of people don't know about all the things that you're doing in the community, and they need to hear about it." So unfortunately, he's not here with us, but he does have brochures on the back table. And look him up online if you don't know him, check his picture out, and check out his site online. Is everybody back in from moving their cars? One more person. Oh, nigga, there's one last, two last ones. There we go. All right. So now we have one more representative with us, Mr. Adams, that's going to talk about, tell us who he is and what he represents and what causes that he stands firm on. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
No problem. Thank you for having me. I appreciate that, you guys opening your doors. It's important to get out to our communities and listen to you. I'm approaching probably close to 5,000 residents, houses that I've visited so far, between Monville, Ledgerd, and here in Norwich. And I'm listening to what's going on out there and the things that are important to you, because they're important to me. I'm running because I grew up here. Taffiel kid, you know, Norwich is my home. I graduated from NFA, and I've been here for a long time. It's important, because how many people have lived here more than 10 years? Any? Lot, a lot of us? Okay. How many of you have been happy all those 10 years here with everything that's been going on? I'm just asking, because there's been a lot of control from certain individuals behind me that have had control over this, what's happening. Our city should be so much better than it is right now. And there's a lot of programs that... And there's a lot of programs that now are coming to light, now that they want to talk about bringing, these have been issues that have been going on for 20, 30 years here and they're just addressing them now. They say they have bills in place, they say this, they say that. I'm not in office yet, our Republicans are not in office yet that are running. We've already signed and enacted pacts that should we be elected, when we get in on January 4th, we're already, we already have the ball rolling for a lot of the funding that we need, a lot of the issues that are facing us. The economy is hitting us hard. I had a 62-year-old woman yesterday in Taffel section of Norwich here, just saying that she can't afford to retire, that her 401K has crashed so much that her and her husband can't retire. Her mother built that house for them in 1960 and she might have to give it up just because of what's happening here now. It's tough on everybody. I have a family. I have a 21-year-old son, I have an 18-year-old daughter and I have a 1-year-old daughter. It's tough on everybody. So I have skin in the game. I know how hard times are for all of us. You know, I'm raising a family in these times. It's hard to make ends meet. It's hard to worry about, I don't know if I can make that extra drive around the block so my 1-year-old daughter could stay asleep a little bit longer because as soon as I park, she's getting up, you know, because I can't afford the gas. And that's tough. I mean, that's just reality. I'm living in reality. I'm living just like everybody else. I know I'm not in that house on the hill. I'll never be on that house on the hill. I'm the brother in the projects. That's where I came from. That's who I am. They told me that I could never be this, that I could never have this opportunity when I was in school. I wasn't inspired by anybody. I didn't have anybody to look up to that looked like me, that represented me. I'm walking, we're waving signs yesterday. Robert Bell and I are out there. Three kids put down their window in their mom's car on their way to school. Hey, Mr. Adams. You know, they know who I am. I walk through their neighborhoods, they see in the name on the back of my sweatshirt. They know who I am. They want to have conversations. I talk to them. Be anything you want to be. You got to inspire them. I'm here to inspire the next generation. Our kids are our future, all right? Anybody older than me, I'll be 50 next week. Anybody older than me? I mean, we're relying on them and we haven't done a very good job for our youth over the years. We haven't provided them, we haven't taught them the right way. We're telling them now in schools, we're telling them what to think and not how to think. We're telling them, we're giving them a fish to eat and not teaching them how to fish, if anybody's familiar with that analogy. We have to do a better job. Somebody needs to stand up for us, for our kids. I'm that guy. I won't back down from anybody. I listen to anybody. I can walk across both aisles, being biracial, growing up, being discriminated against this race and this race. I know what it's like. I can walk the aisle. I can walk down the middle of the aisle and be okay. I grew up in a neighborhood here, a neighborhood there. I've had to, you know, I've had to be that kid. I've had to negotiate my life, literally. I have had to negotiate my whole life and make people understand that I have everybody's best interest in mind, that if I'm going to work for my family as a benefit, it's going to benefit your family because it affects me. I pay the taxes here in Norwich. I shop here in Norwich. I know what all this inflation is doing to us. I know what the crime is. I was here when crime was at an all-time high before, when we had gangs running the streets. Well, you know what? You take away our police, we're not fully staffed. We're having more and more activities, violent crimes, break-ins in every city and everybody around us. All our police departments are down. We have people going into cars, breaking in in their driveways now. Every home I go to, an average one out of three homes now has a home security system. That's unheard of. That was unheard of 10 years ago. That was unheard of 20 years ago. Only people who had home security systems were the rich people who had the really big houses and really nice cars because they were worried about getting robbed. Now, everybody's worried about it. There's no discrimination now. And as times get tougher, the crime's going to go up. That's just, that's just what happens here. We can't afford to live like this anymore. You can't afford to have soft lawmakers in Hartford right now who are going to be like, oh, well, we're going to do this or we're going to do that. You've been in the damn job for 10, 20, 30 years. Give it up. You're not doing your job. You haven't done your job. We're suffering now. We've been suffering under this. It's time to go. It's time to get new people in there, new passion, new fight. Enough is enough. Rocky says it all the time. And it is. I've had enough. We've all had enough. Make the change Tuesday, November 8th. We all need it. We all deserve it. And if it doesn't work out, you know what? In two years, vote me out, get somebody else in who's willing to do it. But don't stick with the same old, same old. You know what you've gotten the last 30 years, 40 years here in Connecticut. You know what you've gotten. It's not getting any better. I said it and I'll say it again. Einstein's definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. Continue to vote for the same people you've always voted for and you're going to get the same results that you've got. You're going to be sitting right now in the same chair, wondering, why is everything else going up but my check? That's what you're going to wonder. Why did I vote for these people again? And you know what? We have to show up to vote. We have to get to the polls. Don't go to the polls Tuesday to vote alone. Grab somebody. Gas is expensive, it's cheaper to carpool. You know, bring somebody with you. Make your vote count. There has never been a more important election in this state in the last 50 years than this one on Tuesday. You have the power in your vote to change the next generation of what happens here for the better. For the better. You have that power. You have that right. Exercise it. Make sure everybody you know exercises it. Come out, vote. Vote, Row B, all the way across. Thank you.
Wow, that's a tough crowd to follow. Thank you, everybody, for your time on the last weekend before elections. And I just want to, I don't know how to say this again, but go out and vote and exercise your right. You know, this is not just one man's country, but it's all men's country, all of our country. And if we don't show up, we don't have a right to complain because we're not being part of the solution. You know what I mean? It is our duty and our due diligence to show up and to show out and to express our opinion, not only on voting day. That's not the only important day. Here in Norwich, we have city council meetings twice a month, the first Monday and the third Monday of the month. And when I go to the city council meetings, nobody's there. Or it's the same one person, one citizen for the whole, that represents the whole 50,000 citizens in Norwich that's there. You know, so it's not just showing up on Tuesday to vote, but showing up for your city every single day, showing up for your city because this is where you live, you work, you play. This is where your kids go to school. This is where you pay taxes. So show up for the town that you love and that you call your home. Thank you. I want to say thank you to all the political leaders. I know some people might want to have some questions to ask them, but this is not the place or the time for that. They have their own parties that give citizens the ability to stand up and speak to their party leaders and ask their party leaders questions. Or they also have, what do they call that? Campaign managers and things like that, that you can contact and ask questions and bring up the issues that you want to hear about. Like, where do you stand on my issues, on my causes? You know, so that's your job to do, to contact them and to speak to them. They did their job and their due diligence by showing up today, showing up here on their last Saturday of their election campaign. That says something to me in regards to everybody. Oh, I'm sorry, the last, what did I say? What did I call this? I didn't call it the last Saturday? What did I call it? Sunday?
One more cup of coffee.
Also, we have two referendum question in the ballot, if you want.
Okay. I'll let Sanji let you know about that. There's two.
Thank you very much. Well, on behalf of City of Norwich, as a city council member, first of all, I thank you, everyone, for having this kind of platform. I think it's really important that as a community, we get together and chat on different things. And we should know who our candidates are. That's a very important thing as well. So my only request is make sure everybody goes to vote. And we also have two referendum questions on the ballot as well. First is in regards to the early voting. Second is in regards to the, basically, our schools. And you should, you know, you can get some more information on those two questions. I cannot really advocate for these things, but those are very important questions. We should definitely know more about it. And it's $385 million school bond, which is very well needed for our community. So please make sure you do your research and act accordingly. Thank you.
Peter's here.
The mayor of Norwich is also here with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah? Is he sleeping? Yeah. Not much. He just became a father again. I can tell. Again, I want to thank you all for hosting this, for, I'm sorry, for all the candidates as well. It's fairly, really important that you express yourself on election day. He talked about the two questions on the ballot. They are important. Please read them and make a choice on them. He's correct. We can't advocate in any way as far as the school bond. It's in your hands. We're prohibited by law. We put it on the ballot, so therefore we can't advocate yes or no even for that matter. We're prohibited. There's a little more explanation. But it is really important that you vote, really, really important. It's the one time you have a say over whoever's sitting up here. You choose the leaders. You chose leaders in this city race last year. It's really, really important you practice and go to vote. Don't say I don't have time. Make the time. It's a 14-hour day, from 6:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. It's really, really important that the people that get elected are elected by you, the people who show up at the polls. Really, really important. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you for the moment. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
I just want to, Mike France, who's running for Congress, was planning on being here. He got caught up at another event. He just texted me. He's running about 15 minutes late. I don't know if you guys are just going to hang around and be here, but if you are, he would be, he's on his way, be willing to talk to you, answer any questions. But I did just want to let you know that he did have all intentions of being here.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And just, real quick, before all of our political leaders depart, if anybody will be staying throughout, until 1:00, you could stay in the back and then anybody who has any questions or anything that they want to talk to you guys afterwards or you guys, they could pull you guys to the side. So if you guys could take up the back row, that would be great to do that and give people opportunity. And at the end, I'm also going to do a call to action to anybody that wasn't here in the first part to come and talk to you guys.
Mike France is here.
Mike France is here. Yes.
Yes.
Commander?
Do you want to say your word?
Sir, can you say your word? I thought you were running a little bit later.
Hi, hi. Mike France.
So we're just giving our names, we're giving our names, the position that we're campaigning for, the responsibilities to that seat, and what are our commitments or causes that you stand firmly on and that you would like to share with us today.
Oh, thank you very much. My name is Mike France. I currently serve as state representative, my fourth term in legislature, representing the 42nd district, which is Legerd, Preston and Montville. I'm currently running for Congress, which serves basically the eastern half of the state, the 2nd district, starts the Connecticut River essentially and goes around border Massachusetts to the water. And really, the role of Congress is to provide for our national defense, provide for security of our country, and that's essentially what it is, whatever's covered in the Constitution. What I see as the principal challenge that we face, frankly, is a financial one. We have not had a budget in 25 years, which allowed for the debt to grow because Congress has failed to do its job to pass a budget that's constrained by the revenue that is coming in. What I've learned in serving eight years on the Appropriations Committee in Hartford is we need to have a balanced budget. We need to have a budget that is supported by the revenue that is coming in, so that the people can have confidence that the programs the government has provided are paid for. We have not seen that at the federal level for many years and that is the first thing that we're dealing with. And that's why we're frankly seeing the inflation today and the recession that we have today is largely driven by the excessive spending that has happened. So that's the number one priority. I think the second thing that I, come back, my background, I'm a retired naval officer, spent 20 years on active duty in the Navy. We have a situation where our national defense is in jeopardy. We see China growing from a naval perspective, surpassing us in numbers. We are now, in fact, I just finished reading an editorial for this morning, it says, from an admiral in Strategic Command, it says, "We're not prepared to deal with China at this point and we are slowly sinking." That is not a position that the United States has ever been in, frankly, and we shouldn't be in because we need to be the strength on the national stage and the international stage to ensure that aggressors elsewhere in the world do not take action. Frankly, I think that is what we're seeing with Putin's decision to invade Ukraine, is our lack of ability to project that power and to be a deterrent force to prevent military action. And those are the two big things that we need to deal with. And I think that once we deal with that, those two issues, we can look at other things that we need to do. But those two priorities are the things that I think we need to set first. Right after that and going along with that, national security is our border. We see the fentanyl coming across that border and southern border. I grew up in Southern California, so I'm very familiar with the southern border. In fact, at one point in my life, I literally lived one town away from the Mexican border and could see the wall on the hill from where I lived. So that is something I have experience with and I see the challenges and understand the challenges that we face. And it is not just a border situation. It's not just the four states that sit along the Mexican border. It is literally every state in the country because the individuals that are coming across the border are being transported elsewhere across the country, including in Connecticut. And so it is an issue that we all have to deal with and understand the consequences of. And our federal government needs to be sure of who is coming across our border and make sure that those that are coming across the border belong here and are not going to cause an increase in damage to our public safety, frankly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Once again, like I said, you're going to have the opportunity to speak to these individuals in the back of the room. This is not a political debate, so I just want to make sure everybody knows to be nice. And I'm going to have this, the political panel move to the, back to the, back of the room so that if they have any questions from anybody coming in, they could answer those questions for those individuals. Now, we're going to move on to our next section, which is our human services, our City of Norwich Human Services Panel. Can I please have you guys come up? Yeah. Mm-hmm. Oh, no, no. Yeah, come on, John. He don't work. He's the next panel. He's the next panel.
It's okay if he did.
So this is the City of Norwich Human Services Department and they handle, I had a meeting with Aaron last week to realize that they handle a lot more than I thought. So I'm just going to hand the mic over. I'm not even going to talk. I've done a lot of talking and I'm just going to hand the mic over. I just have really one question is for you guys to identify your roles and what departments you guys handle. And also, just give us a synopsis of what is human services. I know there's some changes that's gone, that's going on and we're all excited to hear about the changes. And if you guys can please take us through that. So I'm going to start right here and just bring the mic down. So you're going to tell me about human services and your role in human services in your department.
Okay, all right. So is it okay if we go out of order? I kind of want to do like the umbrella effect, right? So, yeah, so Kate is our department head, so I'll let her start.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. My name's Kate Milde. I am the director at Human Services Now for the City of Norwich. I'm new. Thank you. So I'm not new to human services, I'm just new to this role, but I'm so excited. That said, overview of human services. So we are made up of three divisions. So we have our Adult and Family Division, and that's headed up by Hadi Mercedes. So she's our Division Manager in Adult and Family Services, and that's the office that sits in City Hall. And then we have the Youth, Family, and Recreation Services Division, and that's headed up by Erin Hagan. And, yeah, you can clap for them. They deserve it. And, and that's what, and what we colloquially call the Rec Building up there on Mohegan Road. And then we've also got the Senior Center, which is on 8 Mahan Drive. So those are our three divisions, and Mike Wolak is our Division Manager over there. So we have two for three here, and then we have our special guest Hannah, who is part of our Youth and Family and Recreation Division. She's our prevention coordinator, so you've probably seen her at a lot of events, too. But that is kind of an overview of the things we do. I'm going to let the division managers talk about their divisions, and I'm kind of repping the Senior Center for them today. And I just want to express that we put a bunch of newsletters out with a ton of information. There's low and no-cost opportunities for people 55 and up at the Senior Center, and we never want to turn anyone away for inability to pay. So make sure you get out there, and we're, we have a little project in the works you may have heard about, but we were able to team up with Youth, Family, and Recreation, and we're bringing pickleball courts over to the Senior Center. So, yay. So that'll be, you know, another boost for public community opportunities and recreation for all. But I'll hand it off to Hadi first. She can talk about what we do at Adult and Family Services.
Good morning, all. Thank you for the opportunity. Like Kate said, my name is Hadi Mercedes, Adult and Family Service Manager. We are at the City Hall, helping people rent, with rent utilities, childcare. With being, using ARPA funding for a year, almost a year now, we have had another round that has given us the opportunity to help a ton of people with the challenges that they are facing every single day. But there's a lot to be done, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to hear ideas actually from the community on how can we make sure that the people in need are served in the best way. I moved to Norwich, I'm not from Norwich, but I moved to Norwich back in 2019. I purchased a house here with, with my husband. I'm just so happy to serve the family in this little town that I love, and I'm never going to move. I don't want to move from here anymore. So thank you, guys.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Like Kate said, I'm Erin Hagan. I'm the manager at Youth, Family, and now Recreation. So for those that don't know, we used to be two separate divisions, but we had the opportunity to merge us as one, which is really exciting because I think for our citizens of Norwich, it's kind of a wraparound model that we want to help people social, emotionally and physically, get their needs met and become, you know, healthy, productive members of society and in their families. I was raised in Norwich. I went to Norwich Public Schools, graduated from NFA. And actually, I love to tell this story, but when I was 16, I actually started receiving services at Youth and Family Services for an experience that I had and got the support and guidance that I needed to then kind of, you know, I could have gone either way, you know? So thankfully, you know, I had some bumps in the road, but, you know, here I am. And so I've been serving in this division for about five years as manager for two. So what we do is, I'd probably take up the whole hour now, you know, but I'm going to let Hannah talk more about the prevention work, so that'll shorten it. But we do, I'm going to talk about the social, emotional aspect first. So we provide programs in schools and other locations for young people to develop the coping skills, emotion regulation skills, life skills, conflict resolution, communication, all of those skills that they need to be successful in their relationships and also with themselves and building self-esteem. So we do that at all Norwich Public Schools, NFA, Norwich Tech, Three Rivers Middle College, and like I said, onsite. And then also at community sites, like at our friend Sadie's, Mohegan Commons place there, and we partner with Bully Busters as well. So that's a huge part of what we do. We do a lot of leadership programming, so teaching kids leadership skills and how to be successful, focus on mental health prevention, and then also a lot of parent components, parent trainings, on, you know, just developing those skills so that they can be better supportive for their kids. And also, like, other skill building, you know, like healthy eating on a budget, like, that's just an example and things like that. So, and then we have our recreation programming, which offers programming from, like Cynthia would say, zero to 99, right? I was like, what about people who are 100, you know? So, so, yeah, so we, you know, we do the summer camp, which you guys maybe already know about, but there's a lot of other activities that we offer at the building where we're at. But with this merger, the exciting opportunity that comes is our already built-in relationships with the community, right? So doing programming, we've done the social, emotional programming all, as many places as we can with room to grow, of course, like bringing programs to Greenville. So when transportation's an issue for families, they can walk, you know, and they don't have to get up to our building. That's why we do a lot after school because transportation's provided. But with our merger, we can provide a lot of the recreational programming out and about, which it's, you know, sports for sure, that's a big, any kind of physical activity, but also introducing art and cooking and yoga for kids and what else?
Life skills.
Life skills, yeah, yeah. We do all that. So I honestly, I will leave here and be like, oh, my God, I totally forgot to mention that, which just reminded me. So we also run our Juvenile Review Board. So for those that don't know, whenever kids get arrested for a misdemeanor, we bring them through a diversion process so they don't have to go to juvenile court. The statistics show, once a kid walks through that front door, their rate of recidivism and risk of recidivism increases. So we bring them through a process where we get to know them, we get to know the family, find out kind of what led up to the situation they got themselves in, and then create an agreement to help provide them success, more success. So that could be counseling, mentoring, which we also provide, and also signing them up for a gym, getting in a recreation program, providing that funding for them that they otherwise wouldn't be able to afford. So, woo, that's a lot of what we do. We're always looking for suggestions for programs, and we're also looking for people with special skills that want to come run these programs with us. So if that's you or somebody you know, I have my business cards, reach out to us. Our goal is to expand our programming and make it as big and as far-spreading as possible. And we're renovating Mo Peep, too. Just to say that. I think that's it. So one part of our programming that I didn't talk about at all is our substance use prevention with a little bit of mental health prevention trickled in. But we received a federal grant three years ago called the Drug-Free Communities Grant, and we were able to hire a full-time prevention coordinator, and that is Hannah. And so I'm going to let her talk about what she does.
Thank you. So my name is Hannah Ornburn. I'm the Drug Prevention Coordinator for the city. So a lot of what I do is I run a coalition called the Norwich Prevention Council, which you might have seen our billboards that are up around town and hopefully more to come. But what we are is a group of community leaders and community members like yourselves that work together to provide prevention programs for the community. So I do run some after-school programs, like right now I run the Leadership Program for both middle schools, teaching kids how to do leadership skills in an unconventional way. So we do games to keep them engaged, and then we talk about it more afterwards so that they have a deeper understanding of what they're learning. But I also run what's, what I call the First Step Program, which is for kids who get caught for the first time vaping or having drugs or alcohol in school. And they're referred to me in the hopes that it will reduce their suspension time from school, so they get back sooner, there's less childcare needed, and their needs are being met, and they're still learning. This has now become a bit of a whirlwind process, and we're getting referrals from the juvenile court system, the Juvenile Review Board, and external sources as well. So we're covering more kids than initially expected, which is great. I'm also working on numerous programs for the schools. Just to talk about drugs and alcohol, you might have heard from your kids, hopefully, that I was there doing the Red Ribbon Week assemblies for the middle schools, which is Drug Awareness Week. The kids were really engaged, and it was great to see all of the middle school kids all at the same time. It was a bit of a crazy afternoon for me, but great nonetheless. And I'm always looking for more opportunities to get on the community and educate people on drugs and alcohol and the dangers of using at a young age. So if you have any suggestions, like Erin said, we're always welcome to them. So please feel free to reach out to me. I think I have a few business cards, but you know where to find me, 75 Mohegan Road. You can always stop by. Okay? That's me. Thanks. I thought of two more things. And then which were? Oh, yeah. Okay, so three things.
Three things I thought of then. First, programming, right? So we run a lot of programming. We just did trunk or treat at the Senior Center. Anybody familiar? Yeah, it was great, right? It was so much fun. It was a record turnout, and that's the kind of thing we'll continue to do. We have the Easter egg hunt. We have Parent Night. We have grandparents and grandkids cookie decorating events. And all of this stuff is free to the community. So get the word out about us. Make sure you're following us on social media, and certainly look us up at norwichct.org. But that said, two other things. Employment's something we didn't talk about. So we, you guys both missed it. We're guilty across the board. So we have adult employment programs. That's called Norwich Works, and that's funded through the Community Development Block Grant. And we have training programs, resume writing, interview assistance, job placement services, and we have an employment specialist right in-house in City Hall in Adult and Family Services. So if you're looking for employment and you're a Norwich resident, please come see us. And if you're looking for, well, I don't know if any youth are in here, but if you have a youth 14 to 24, we have a youth employment program. So it used to be called Summer Youth Employment. It's called Connecticut Youth Employment now. It's year-round funding. The bulk of it happens in the summer. But say you're a small business owner who needs some free help. We can help with that and get a young person in need of a paycheck and experience those things they need, right? So we're making those matches in the community for adults and for young people. And employment is, of course, one of the best paths to sustainability, right? So I didn't want to leave that out. And then in terms of being a hub, right? So we are the hub for human services for the city. So we heard other organizations who do valuable work and who are invaluable partners of ours. But as the Human Services Department for the city, we run things like the Community Care Team. So that's an organization, a coalition, if you will, of different organizations that provide services to the homeless population so that people that maybe wouldn't be on a standard service radar don't get missed. And we collaborate every week on that Community Care Team to make sure that people don't fall off that radar. And then we also run the Norwich Task Force. So that is more substance use focused, and that has kind of legislative outreach and prevention prongs to it. And we meet with a lot of, even parole comes to that, reliance health comes to that. We try and hit every community organization that might provide services to someone with substance use disorder. So in terms of interacting with the community, really boots-on-the-ground being here, like at events like this, it's a priority for us because we exist to serve you guys. And so we want to continue to be that hub for services. And if you guys have opportunities, programs, resources that we're not aware of, please let us be that platform for you, and we want to absolutely engage with you and appreciate the invite today. So thank you.
Amazing, amazing ladies. They make my job so much easier, and they make me look so good.
You have a few males on the chat there, yeah.
Jeez, you guys can shine. We're taking some questions now. I know that there's some people that had some questions when I was going around the community and asking and saying that, hey, we're going to have a family meeting to talk to human services. They have new directors in place, and they want to know what is, what does the community need? What is keeping the community from accessing the services that they already have? I believe from one of our meetings, you know, you had said, like, the minimum requirement to put on a class is five people, and sometimes you only have two or three that sign up. You know what I mean? So we have services in Norwich. We have services here, but they're not being used. And I would like to know, we would like to know, why is that? You know, if anybody wants to say anything or have any questions right now, this is your opportunity to do so. The floor is open to ask any questions that you want right now.
One thing I had wanted to say, too, is with this merger of Youth and Family and Recreation, we can kind of change that minimum, right? So we can still be able to provide a facilitator with the requests they have for payment, but use some of the grant money through Youth and Family Services to cover maybe the three non-signups. So we can still run the program, which will hopefully lead to those two people telling their friends, telling their friends, and then the next time we run it, we could have more. So that was another benefit of the merger, but, yeah.
And if you don't have any questions now, please feel free to go to the City of Norwich website.
Norwichct.org.
Norwichct.org.
Instagram, where we share a lot of our flyers. And if you want to join our email list, oh, I'm pretty loud. If you want to join our email list, but I do love a microphone. I'm not going to lie. If you do want to join our email list, I send out flyers and things like that, and also our Facebook, Instagram, at Norwich Youth and Family, Norwich Youth, Family, and Recreation Services. And then Hannah has a Facebook that, an Instagram she runs under Norwich Prevention Council.
Yes, I was going to talk about that. But first, one question, maybe, who do we serve? So for financial assistance, we serve Norwich, residents of Norwich that have been in Norwich for at least 30 days, and we have some creative ways to show that. But we can provide case management to anyone, even if they haven't been in Norwich for 30 days. I also wanted to mention that we are running a program called Adopt and Family. This is a program for, for, for family who have kids and they need help with getting Christmas gifts. So we get sponsors, and we match a sponsor with the family, and the sponsors go out, get the gift that the kids want to get, and then we distribute the gift. The families draw a, write a thank you card, and, and, you know, sponsors feel like they're saying it, and the kids are happy because they get what they want. So that is a really satisfying program that we're running. We have a lot of space for kids, so just send everyone that haven't signed up for the Adult and Family Program. We do have the intake form for people who have never received services in our website, but we also have the wish list. That's the sheet where they write specifically what they want to get for, for gifts.
Typically, not, it's when we, and we're able to create a waitlist. If we have 20 sponsors, let's say we have more than that, but if we have 20 sponsors and we already have 20 families, but 25 families have signed up, we put those five families in a waitlist and work hard to get more sponsors so we can serve as many families as possible. Last year, we served more than 100, I think it was 140, something, around there. So we had enough sponsors to, to provide gift to anyone who applied.
And languages? Spanish, English, Creole? I asked that because that's who lives in our community. I run across a lot, you can't, I'm sorry. I'm camera shy. I'm sorry. So my question is, do you have notices about these services? Let me borrow yours. I don't like me. If it were. Hello? Hi. I'm camera shy. Question, you did answer one, how long you have been in existence? My other question is, the notices about the services that you provide, can I get that in English, Spanish, Creole? I asked that because we're talking about our residents here. If they're not aware of what services they're saying, they can't read the language, how do we expect them to come and utilize these services? And I asked that because I run across that in a lot of situations, a whole lot.
All right. So, yes, we can do our flyers and notices and everything in all languages, and we do have some Spanish-speaking people that can help us run programs, but thanks to the connection with Cynthia, she had, we are able to maybe identify some interpreters in many, many more languages. Because, right, it's great if we promote the program in a different language, but if we can't provide it in a different language, then that's a problem. So...
So that's what this partnership has given us. We also have something called SierraCom, like the language line. So we can use that as an opportunity to translate for families. But it's way better when it's somebody like standing there with us. So yes.
In Adult and Family Services, I speak Spanish and we are going to hire another Spanish caseworker. Our intake form is in English and Spanish. But like Erin said, we do have the SierraCom system where we would meet with some, one of our caseworkers met with a Chinese client the other day and used a SierraCom system and it was very successful. Of course, it's not the same as if you were speaking, right? Face to face with the person using their, their first language. But we do have the system to provide services to the people and anyone who needs it.
I just want to say thank you to what you guys do at Human Services and thinking about the community at large. Because I don't think our community realizes that you're not only providing services, activities for us to do, but you're also looking at ways that we can put food on the table. Put food on the table and employ ourselves. You're also giving us opportunities when we fall, if something happens, mishaps happen in anybody's life, you help us get back up. So this is a wraparound service that the City of Norwich has. And not a lot of cities can say that they have this type of service that can really wrap around a community and help them at every stage. We spoke about homelessness here, you know, drug prevention here, housing and education and even Christmas, you know, gifts for our kids if we're having some problems. You know, sometimes those teenagers, when they get up there and they're like, we want an Xbox. I was like, $500 for what? You must be out of your mind. You're going to go see Human Services. You're going to send that list over there. But before I wrap up this panel, I just have a testimony actually in regards to one of the programs Erin was talking about, which is a mentoring program that my son went through. During COVID, the kids were locked up in the house for what, two years? They were cooped up in the house, no school, no nothing. Lord have mercy on my soul. So I got two teenagers that are Irish twins, one boy, one girl. And it was not pleasant at all in the house with my Irish twins. You know how Irish are the fighting Irish? Yeah, that's why they're Irish twins. Okay, they're always fighting. And I found myself in a situation where I needed services. My son was in the courts and I said, I need a mentor. You know, we're going to go through this process, but I need a mentor. And that's what he, he needs someone to talk to. Because mom is not enough. They referred me to Erin. She gave me a call. She set me up with a mentor. And that's why I'm standing here today. Because full circle, I met with her last week and I had to tell her full circle, you know, the reason why we're here and even having this conversation is because of, she answered that call. That my son was able to do a block party and come out of his shell and all that. Being inside like the caveman type of thing kind of fell off of him and I saw light again in my son. And you know, that's why I'm here. And that's why I'm doing what I'm doing. You know, that's why it's important for us to have these family town hall meetings within our community and invite our leaders to our community to speak to us so that we can know what to do when we are in trouble, that we know that we're not alone. You know what I mean? If somebody did not give me a referral, if I wasn't like, you know, a fighter, I would have never found Erin. You know what I mean? So and I don't think I had the best attitude when we first spoke, did I? Everybody's been telling me that. So I've been, I've been learning to get a little bit better. I don't, I guess I come off a little bit rude or a little bit aggressive. But I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for what you guys are doing. Because it definitely, I'm, you know, for me personally in my household, Human Services can come in all day, every day. Okay, I need all you guys' services. And I told Mike, I need him to expand the, that 55 age needs to go down to like 40. Because whenever I go up there, the ladies in the yoga room, they be killing it. They be killing, they got the doors closed. I be peeking. They be killing it in the yoga room at the senior center. Someone has a question for Human Services.
Hello, good morning. My name is Anne and I am from Haiti. I'm Haitian. I've been living in Connecticut for three years by tomorrow. And I've been living in Norwich specifically for two years now. And I'm happy to be here. I love Norwich. I've received a lot of opportunities. And then I started as a housekeeper in Foxwood, 2019. And now I'm a business owner. So I, I, I have a lot of things to say. But I have two questions because I didn't want it to want a program myself. But since I found something, as a business owner, I always wanted to mentor. You talk about the free help that you can get some youth to help in summer. So what will be the requirement for these young people? And what will also be the requirement for our, us as business owners to get that?
Does this one work? Yes, it does. Okay, so you're talking about the Youth Employment Program. So our internship program is set up. So Senator Austin mentioned the Eastern Connecticut Workforce Investment Board. That is actually who funds the fiduciary hub, if you will, for our youth employment programming. And so they have different strands of money for, that have different requirements. So for instance, we call the state money. That's for low-income youth, age 14 to 24. And simple things like Husky Card, SNAP benefits, free reduced lunch letter, that's the kind of requirement we need. In terms of identification, SOSH, birth certificate, they have to fill out tax forms. They get onboarded as an employee through our partner, EastCon. So EastCon works with EWEB and works with us. And these kids get hired on as EastCon employees. And typically, the internships are about 100 hours. But we have different pots of money. So if a kid were juvenile justice involved, for instance, they would have closer to 200 hours. If they had DCF involvement, then an active case with DCF, then they could get 220 hours. And we also do things like co-enroll them. So say they're low-income and DCF involved, then they could get 320 hours at an internship. And our Youth Employment Program Coordinator is Hector Sanchez. And he personally interviews every kid that applies for that program. And he does it at NFA, at Norwich Tech. We've done it in the rec building before. And he and his team interview every kid that applies, that qualifies. And then makes a match based on their interests, their aptitude, their access to facilities. So we think about things like transportation too. And we try and make a, a good fit based on the workplaces that also show interest in the program. So two things are kind of happening simultaneously. We're interviewing the workplaces and vetting them. And we're interviewing the kids and vetting them. And then we make the match based on that. So that said, the timesheets, the performance evaluations, all of that happens on, by our Youth Employment Team. So they come in and do spot checks multiple times a week to make sure things are going well, that the workplace feels supported, that the youth feels supported. And then there are a lot of other components that just in the past three years, they've added to it. So resume writing is now a requirement. Job interest inventory. So one of the tools we use is MyNextMove. MyNextMove.org is great for that. We do mental health awareness. Erin herself has run mental health trainings for youth in the employment program. So we try and do things like luncheon learns and give opportunities for enrichment, while also making sure these kids live, leave with more than just a paycheck, that they have a deliverable in hand to further their careers too. So it's very nuanced and individualized in that way. But there again are some standard parameters we follow. So in terms of business requirements, passing background checks, you know, being a safe space. We always go into the space before we send a kid in there, having a meeting, orientation. There's a whole packet of materials. There's also a workplace agreement that the business owner would sign with the Youth Employment Coordinator to follow specific guidelines to make sure they're adhering to Department of Labor regulations, all of that. So there, there are formalities on the backend. But that again is very individualized based on the needs of the business. And simple things like you couldn't transport the kid. So if you had a food truck, for instance, it would have to be that the youth would find that location for that day, be there for that day and get their own transportation or we could provide it presumably. So simple things like that, you go through with the employment manager.
Okay, my next question will be, is there a specific business kind? Because I am event designer. I do event design, floral design and all of this. And I was mostly interested in that because I want people to learn from me. So they don't have to pay, like mentor them in a kind of way. And I'm also a personal chef, which involve a lot of traveling in and out of city. Because I have a, like, I'm not a traditional personal chef. I have a business called Pate à la carte. So it is a kind of services that I offer at your place. Like I go to your home or to your event and I cook there. But I cook a specific meal called Haitian Pates. You know that Haitian Pates, Pates is mostly a street snack for us. But I'm taking it to another level because most of people are in touch to it and they want to experience that. So this is what I do. So I wanted to know, is there a specific business that they can participate in?
Yeah, so that wouldn't necessarily disqualify them. There would just be some logistical considerations is what I'm hearing from you. So off the, off the cuff, I would say that sounds like a great opportunity for someone to learn and grow. But in terms of transportation, you know, maybe it's someone 18 and up that has their own transportation. So the businesses can put in their own requirements for kids. You know, sometimes it's not appropriate for someone under 18 to be in a specific facility. Sometimes maybe alcohol is being served there. So across the board, we don't put anyone under 18 in there. You know, so, so there are those considerations. But that's something that our employment specialist works out with every business to try and make the fit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another question.
Bonjour tout le monde.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everybody. C'est un plaisir de m'emmener avec nos jodias.
Oh, it's a pleasure that I'm here with you guys today.
C'est la première fois que je suis assis à une réunion comme ça.
It's the first time that I'm assisting a reunion like this.
Moi, je tente de tout ça, non? Dieu bien que ma parole est anglais bien.
I hear everything that you guys are saying, even though I don't speak the language very well. A lot of things sounds good to the ears. When you look at the reality, it's not what it is for real. And I remember at the time that some issues paying some bills. I went to the company. And they referred me to TVCCA.
Et puis, ils m'ont dit qu'ils ont un lettre qui montrait que ma femme vivait dans la ville mais qui était impossible pour moi pour m'ajouter.
The letter to prove that husband wasn't living in the house. Because of this, I was disqualified. And the company said they're going to cut off the bills, call them to the court. Okay, so basically, the process to be qualified is long and hard. And she wasn't qualified for the things that she needed.
Yeah, so just to clarify, her personal experience, she says, you know, everything sounds nice, what's being said here. And all the services sounds nice. But when you, in actuality, in reality, when someone like her goes to Human Services or goes to TVCCA or applies for services, they get turned away because they're asking for things that are impossible for them to get. Her husband was out of the house and she doesn't know where her husband left. He abandoned her. So they wanted a letter from her husband to say that he wasn't in the house anymore. He's gone. How can you manifest something out of nothing? You know, so those are the type of red tapes that a lot of people in our community come across.
Yes, I cannot speak about TVCCA, but I can speak about our office. So we, it's a, it's a list of paperwork that we, that we need, right? To qualify someone for assistance. Proof of residence is one of them. So if in the lease, there's two adults, for example, we need income from every adult, right? And if the circumstances is that the person is in, an adult is in the lease or mortgage bill, but they're not living in the house at the moment, we need some type of proof that they're not living in the house. We use federal funding. Most of our, the larger funding that we use is federal. So we need to make sure that the process, right, is followed as, as it should be in case we're audit, right? So things like that, that could potentially have a quick fix is a matter of having, right? Explanation, communication with the caseworker as to what can I do instead of, what can I provide instead of this paperwork because he's not able to write this letter, right? Is there any other case manager that have been working with the family as a way, and it's weird that this person is no longer living in the house? So we do have a list of documents that we require and we need to ask for those documents. But there's also, there, there may be other ways to prove what we need to prove in order to qualify the, the family. It's important to, you know, talk to the case manager, talk to the caseworker. And we work in collaboration with every single agency in Norwich. So again, if the families have already working with, with another agency and the, and the case manager can attest to that information, we could use that as well. So, but thank you for the feedback. We want to make sure that we're not setting barriers, but we're actually allowing the people to apply the easiest way possible. But again, there is always requirements that we have to follow as we use federal funding.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so she's like, since we're, you know, had mentioned assistance with housing and things like that, you know, she went three months without working. And her mortgage company gave, she was put into this program to lower her mortgage. And she's been in that house since 2006. She was almost done paying for the house. And because she wasn't able to pay for the three months in this whole new program, now the, her mortgage, she's been refinancing. now the, her mortgage, she's been refinanced to, and finished paying in 2053. Yeah, so these are the things that is happening within the Haitian community because of language barriers, because of not knowing what is available to us, you know? And human services is a great wraparound service, but it doesn't hit these barriers. Because, because we don't speak the language, because this is not our country, we become food on the table for other people, you know? For people to take advantage of us, to give us high mortgage rates, to turn around and give you someone that's like maybe four or five years almost done paying their mortgage and set them up to 1953, I mean 2053, you know? So these are things that we cannot solve here, but we definitely can highlight those issues and talk about, and talk about them on the table and say, okay, these are people are being targeted and how can we keep them from being targeted? What is the information that we have to put in different languages so that people aren't being taken advantage of and being abused? You know, because a lot of times they might be under the influence that, hey, it's human services that's helping me and it's not. That, oh, we're gonna get you some help and it's not help. You know what I mean? So people come into our community all the time to really just feed on our people. And we don't want that anymore. So we try to educate our people so that those type of things don't happen. And that's the reason why we're having this meeting here today. So that we can educate them about the services that are available to them. And then we can educate our community leaders in regards to what are we facing as a community? You know, when we need help, we can't find no help. We, you know, we spoke about, you guys mentioned that you guys have another Spanish-speaking person, meaning two Spanish-speaking people that's gonna be in human services. Haitians been in Norwich since 1984. The reason I know is because I'm one of the, one of the five families that was, that moved here in 1984, when there was no Haitians at all, you know? So being, with that said, you know, we should at least have a coordinator, an assistant that speaks the language, reads and writes the language. We have so many talented Haitian individuals that come to me and say, hey, I don't wanna do my job anymore. Where can I apply? You know, where can I?
We have positions open. Please apply.
I took the pictures. I went up there because Erin told me they were coming out. So I went up there earlier this week and I took pictures of the postings. And I have to say, for some of those positions, you know, we have qualified individuals, but some, our people with a master's degree, they're not coming to work at human services. I'm sorry to be a coordinator, a youth and family coordinator with a master's degree from our community. It's not happening for $50,000, $60,000 a year, you know? Because I've spoken to them and they're like, hey, I'm a truck driver making 200K. I don't wanna be driving trucks anymore. Am I gonna take a $50,000 city job? You know what I mean? It's not gonna happen. Am I going to have a, these kids, they go to school. They go and they go get like, they go to these big universities and stuff that their parents are taking out loans on. So now they're coming out with a $250,000 loan, okay? Not a diploma, a loan, okay, that they gotta pay. Is $50,000 appealing to them a year? No, they're going to Texas. Our kids are going to Texas. They're going to California. They're in Florida, then Georgia right now. That's what they're doing. They're leaving the community here in Norwich because there's nothing for Norwich to offer to our Haitian kids. And they're going to Texas. They're going to Florida. They're going to Georgia. I'm trying to bring our kids back here. That's what I'm trying to do. It might sound selfish, but that's what I'm, I'm trying to invest back in our community, you know? So, but something has to give with that master's degree job for 50, 75,000?
Is there a public student law forgiveness? If you want for that, I mean, I've been working in public service for 15 years and I'm like filled out my application to the president and like there's help is out there. If you can put it 10 years. But I absolutely, I hear what you're saying and probably, you know, just in terms of action plan, we're an action oriented, sorry.
We're an action oriented group of ladies. And I think probably one of the first things we're gonna do is go back and put our intake form in Haitian Creole. I mean, that's why we're here. We want to hear you. We do hear you. We're gonna be responsive. And we have to keep this momentum going, you know? There's a reason we are here today and that's because you guys are valuable to us. So we absolutely pride ourselves on responsiveness. And if you guys have specific cases that maybe you didn't get the services you needed before or maybe it was from a provider that's a partner of ours. Again, I can only say, we're the hub, right? And we have an army of caseworkers who can help you navigate all of those systems. So even if we're not the ones administering the funds, we know where to go and who to call to help you get what you need. So please come see us, call us, reach out to us, do an intake with us. We absolutely want to help you and we'll try and get you as many services in the most creative way possible, okay?
And just real quick, I can speak to the fact of I have over $100,000 in loans. So I totally, and a master's degree. And it is very hard just to make ends meet. And I understand the difficulty in choosing a job that's lower paid. But it comes back tenfold in the community work that we do. And I know that's not realistically gonna put food on the table, but I just wanna emphasize that the work is good. And it's important that we all give back to the community that we came from, even when it's hard, unfortunately.
What I wanted to say is, like you talked earlier, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit emotional right now. When you talk about someone that have a master's degree is not gonna be accepting that job. But someone has to do the sacrifice. Because when I came here eight years ago, if I knew where, I speak Spanish. I used to teach French and DR. I spent two years in medical school, but this is what nas my calling. This is not what I wanted to do. When I dropped out, my family was really disappointed. So my daddy decided not to pay anything for me anymore. So I had to do it myself to get where I want to go. And when I came here, I only had my Spanish to help me. But if we want to have a better Haitian community, we need to be able to communicate. But if me, you, the one who have the knowledge to, I am also an Haitian. I am about to be certified as a medical interpreter. I chose that job. Yes, the money is good. But I used to work 80 hours, it's from 80 to 150 hours every two weeks. I didn't, I couldn't sleep. Why? It's not even about the money. At some point, it was for me, the fact that at 1:00 in the morning, there was a pregnant lady in labor that need my help. There was someone out there that need my help. It's not even about the money. But let's think about how community, how adult who has that barrier. It's our job as young people to guide them, to be there for them, to stand out for them. Because if we want to our communities to grow, someone has to do the first step. Somehow, someone has to sacrifice. And okay, I'm not gonna get paid $50,000 a year. But if I do that, it's gonna be beneficial for the next generation. My daughter is 16 years old. She's about to come here. She actually live in DR. She's about to come here. So what example that I'm gonna step for her? What example I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave for her? She speak only Spati. She doesn't speak Creole. So I already know she identify herself with the Dominican or the Latinos community because she was raised and born there. But us, nous même, nous même qui gen right now, c'est nous même qui pouka pepe nous dit, hey, I want to do that. If we don't do it, who's gonna do it for us? Nobody's gonna do it for us. And I've been talking to Belle for a while. My biggest, biggest pain is to see that everything that has been done, we have no representative in the Haitian community that stand there, be there. Hey, I'm gonna be there. Like the senator said, you are following me. I'm not following you. I am a Norwich resident right now. I want to know what is going on. I want to know what kind of money is available for my people? What kind of money is available for the Haitian refugee? What program we have for us? And to put all ends on it and said, okay, this is what we have for us. I am actually working with City Lead and Mosaic. I am one of the representative of Mosaic because we didn't have anything for us. I am learning from them, but I want also my community to grow. So we need to do the first step. It's not like I am a professional, I am this, I am that. It's not always about the money. It's about the step we have to do, the first stone we have to put. And please feel free to contact me anytime. You need help for interpretation. I am about to be a certified Haitian Creole interpreter. So feel free to contact me. Anybody in the community that need my help, I'm gonna be there to help. Because I came from Haiti. I left my country because of security. Because I couldn't have a better, a better, a better life. But if I am here, I want to grow. I want my people to grow. I want my community to grow. So I am here. I love Norwich. I've been living in Norwich for three years now, two years now. And I'm ready to work with you guys. I am ready to stand up for my community. I've been standing with the Spanish community for two years now, but it's time for me to step up for mine. And I am stepping up for mine. And I'm telling you guys, start stepping for your community. It's not, it's not always about the money. It's about the, hey, my kids are gonna grow here. My grandkids are gonna be here. What am I gonna leave for them? And 10 years from here, we're not gonna have to complain about that language barrier. We're not gonna have to complain about the fact that the resources is there, but we cannot find it because we don't have anybody that represent you. So let's stop complaining about what we don't have or what we don't get, but let's start using what we have and get what we need.
Thank you so much for that. It's beautiful hearing your story. And you've obviously done amazing work for your community and for yourself. So congra-
Hello?
Congratulations on that. I do wanna say that it is also our job as your representatives in this current moment to empower you to speak out and be a voice for your community. So if there's any, any way that we can ever empower you to do so, I know I personally wanna do a lot of cultural competency work for the people who do work for the city and raise your voice and allow us to know what you need from us so that we're adequately meeting your needs. Because if we're not, we're not doing our jobs. So that is coming soon and I'd love to speak to you personally and also other people from your community. And we all wanna basically give you our cards because you're amazing and clearly a champion for, for your community. But thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Now we are like 15 minutes up and I didn't realize this because I was having so much fun back there. Nine minutes?
It was 15 when you asked.
Shut up. Yes, there's another panel. I have my nonprofit panel that's coming up. Please, thank you to Nor-, to the city of Norwich. You guys did it. Thank you. I just wanna say, thank you for, I wanna say, thank you, everybody. That we do have some light refreshments afterwards, but this is one of the most, Ms. Ferna, can you please come up front? This is one of the most, for me, this is, this is my cause in my heart. And where my heart lies is in the nonprofit work, is in, you know, people that have the passion and really doesn't get paid or kinda get overlooked for what they do. So I'm a student from the Health Education Center. And one of the reasons why you hear us organizing or you see me doing certain things is because of the training that they have provided me over the summer for community health worker. They showed me how to do assessments and canvas neighborhoods and about equality and this new thing called equity. So I was like, okay, that's kinda cool. That's kinda cool. I like it. Let's put into action. Let's put it to work. Let's see if it works. So I did just that and I took Rashawn into my community because I'm all about educating my community. And I was, instead of reinventing the wheel, it's about collaborating and joining hands with other people that already are doing it and are mastering it in the field. So I joined hand with the, joined hands with the Health Education Center to bring educational careers to the Haitian community. And one of the first things that we did was CPR training. One of the places that we did our CPR training was here at the El Shaddai Church. And our youngest CPR certified personnel was 10 years old. Unfortunately, he's not here with us today. He's at his auntie's house having fun with his cousins. He was like, I'm not showing up, okay? But I just, you know, that right there, having a 10-year-old at school that can save a life, you know? He's a football player. He does all types of activities. And now he's, he is confident that he knows how to save a life. If one of his classmates are choking, if someone passes out, he knows what to do to, until safety comes, until we could get a paramedic or EMT on the scene. So that's just, you know, a passion of mine is nonprofit work because it comes from the fire within, the drive within. It's not just going into work and punching in and knowing guarantee that you're gonna have a paycheck. When you're a nonprofit, it ain't nothing guaranteed, okay? Just the fact that you wake up every day with this dying passion, every single day running through your head. So I have invited a list of panelists to represent different factors in, in our community. So I invited Bully Busters to represent, you know, our youth, you know, developing our youth into young adults. I invited John, I'm gonna mess up your last name, so I ain't gonna do it. Turbin, Turbin, mhm. My man John Turbin to represent childhood development. You know, that zero to three age and things like that, you know? To really talk about that because that's really important, getting the kids ready for school. Getting our little children ready for school so that they can be successful when they get there. I invited my man Rashawn Hughes. I already told you. These are my people right here, okay? From the Health Education Center. He's out here, they're out here educating people. They have programs from suicide prevention. How many of our young adults have committed suicide and we did not even know that they were depressed? That they had a problem, that they were sad, that something was going on? You know, he's giving our young adults from the age of 16 the tools to identify certain things and to prevent it, you know? So that's what the health education, that's just one of the programs that the health education program has. We, someone just got up and said that they're taking medical interpreting. They do medical interpreting program. I told you about community health worker program that I went through, through the Health Education Center. And a lot of our political leaders are not here, which I wanted them to hear this, is that some of the funding, the eWIB funding that they were talking about, that health pipeline and the mercantile pipeline. I'm a student. I'm a recipient of that health pipeline. And because of that pipeline, I'm able to stand here today. I'm able to assess the neighborhood. I'm able to organize people. I'm able to organize an event because of what happened, because of that pipeline, you know? And come to find out, because I'm not working, anybody know that I'm not working? Can anybody, all right? Thank you. Because I'm not working, okay? Because I'm not working, they might be losing their funding from eWIB. You know, because of me, because I went through their program and I'm not employed. I'm not gainfully employed. Since I graduated, I have, we have, not I, but we have put 18 people through CPR training. The 10-year-old is being one of them. We also have put people through the CHW training. We also have people that in medical interpreting training right now. We also have people that in medical interpreting training right now. We also have Ms. Tamir Capehart, which wasn't doing nothing before, which is leading a Greenville Neighborhood Committee. This is all out of what I've learned through the Health Education Center. So being that the fact that my name came up as risking their funding, you know, because of me, their funding is at risk. You know, because it doesn't show that I'm working. Even though the hours are in, you see the results are in, you know what I mean? But their, their funding is at risk because of that. So if somebody can give eWeb a call, give them a, shoot them an email and be like, hey, I know that girl Cynthia Jean Mary that went to that school. Yeah, she's been doing a lot of work around here in the community. That's it, that's all you gotta say, that she's been working in the community with us. That's all you gotta say and I'll do the rest. Trust me, I got an appointment on Monday. Um, so that's the Health Education Center. I also invited Foundry 66 and also Norwich Development- Development Corporation, um, which man, which really helps develop entrepreneurs in our community. They help nourish and, and, and help us with growth within the community. So they're also a nonprofit, they also have information to share. And everybody that I'm talking about here, I've been through their program. I was a student in, um, Bully Busters, actually. I was a kid in Bully Busters. And so was my kids in Bully Busters. So I'm just letting you know that these are all family here. And then I got Ferna here as, uh, testimony, to give her testimony in regards to the programs that she was introduced to. So I'm just gonna start with the testimony first and then I'm gonna go on down and you guys could tell me what you guys, um, your programs, what you guys have to offer and who can come and welcome and receive services from your program, real quick.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ferna Luellen. And as Cynthia said, I am, um, a CHW student and this is my professor, um, Rashawn over here. It's a great class. Um, the CHW program, I was always interested in, um, knowing how to help my community. I do some work around my church. Um, but I wanted to help more and I wanted to know more resources. So I never really know how to go about it. And then one day Rashawn and Cynthia pop up at my church. They came to talk to me about the CHW, I mean, um, about the CPR program. And then they just snicked it in like, do you know we have a CHW program also? So as they started explaining it to me, I started thinking, wait, this is what I do. This is something that I wanna do. So I, um, applied for the grant and then I got into the program. Um, it's a great program. So now I have so much resources. There's a resource book that I have to make as part of my class. So just so you know, I know you're gonna grade it. It's, it's there. I have the resource book. So I have a lot of resources that I can utilize to, um, help my people when they come to me and ask me questions. And, um, also one thing, um, when, um, my sister over there was talking about the fact, what she's doing, I understand how emotional she, why she's so emotional. It's just that when I walked in here, and this is the first time I'm here in this kind of meeting, when I walked in here and noticed like, wait a minute, where are our people? Like this is, Cynthia is Haitian. She's putting up, uh, an event for, in this community, there's a lot of Haitians. So we wonder, and where are they? Why are they not here? But we hear that there's issues going on, why are they not here? I think one of the reasons is because a lot of our people, because of the language barriers, we don't have enough people out there telling them about what's going on. This event, besides Cynthia that told me about it, I saw it on the day. And that was it. So it was not, not too many people really knew about this, I don't think. So I think that's where, um, the CHW comes in, where we can go out there, talk to these people and tell them like, look, there's something going on in your, you know, in your community. You need to be there. Let's make some phone calls, let's invite some more people. Let's do this together. So you can address your issues and what's going on with you. So, um, I can't, I don't know what else to say. I just love this program and, um, moving forward, if I can, I hope the grant stays so more people. I mean, me personally, I know I'm talking to people about it in my community so they know, so they know how they can help other people. Thank you.
Good luck, good luck at the tournament. Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Riley. I am the Community Manager at Foundry 66. Uh, we are located in downtown Norwich and we are part of Norwich Community Development Corporation, also known as NCDC. So I wanted to quickly talk about two parts. The Foundry part and the NCDC part. Uh, Foundry 66 is a co-working space in a small business development center. It is there and exists as a place for physical community as well as, um, emotional safety and support and like-minded people. We are there to remove obstacles, we are there to build confidence, we are there to help you back up if you fall down in the creation, ideation, development or growth of your business. We provide that by having the physical space, having that community built in, having education and events to connect you to people and resources that you need. We want to see you come in and use our facilities. Come in, meet other entrepreneurs. Get access to those, um, classes or resources that you're missing. Please, um, call me. My cellphone number is plastered all over Norwich. Uh, don't be shy. So, so please do take advantage of that. If you know someone that's interested in starting a business, they have no idea where to start, call me up. We'll sit down, we'll, we'll sit in the conference room that you and I sat in the other day. We'll hash it out. We're gonna, we're gonna have some talks about, um, structuring not just business but community organizations that can help other, um, populations. So that's, that's kinda the Foundry side of things. NCDC, Norwich Community Development Corporation. We are an economic development corporation, nonprofit for the city of Norwich. We work on a wide range of projects. And I won't go into too much detail about that today except for one particular initiative that we're working on that is directly related to the Greenville Neighborhood. And that is, um, you'll see on the table in the back, the Envision Norwich 360 flyer. Um, it is in five languages. It is accessible to all of our population. Um, English, Spanish, Mandarin, Creole and I wanna say Cambodian. Uh, we did in fact check with the school department to find out which, um, which languages were going to be the most accessible for people. But what this is, what, what is Envision Norwich 360? It is a community engagement platform. Um, we see we had a, a, a good turnout today. However, not everyone's available to come. Maybe people are working, maybe they have childcare or transportation issues. And so by scanning this QR code, you can get onto this platform. You can get in direct contact with community leaders that are working on these sorts of projects that will transform Norwich, that will bring about the change that we are looking for. And how does that tie back to the, to the Greenville community? The number one project that we are working on for Greenville and in our Community Investment Fund 2030, that is an $875 million fund from the state of Connecticut targeting distressed municipalities, Norwich being one of them. Uh, over the course of five years, we have the opportunity to apply for these really transformative projects. And we have looked at the Cape Hart Mill here in Greenville as a major investment to the neighborhood to bring safety, visual change, uh, a sense of pride in the neighborhood and to not allow that, that distance between to continue. So how does that come back to Norwich, Envision Norwich 360? We need your feedback on what you want to see included in that project. Is it open space? Is it a community center? Is it performance space? Is it something else? Is it just wooded area? What do you want? Please get involved through the Envision Norwich 360. Choose a language that works best for you. Give us your thoughts, not just on that project, but all of the other projects there. It is an ever-changing website, please visit often. Please encourage your friends, your neighbors, your family, um, to get involved. And if there is something that comes up on that site and we need to, to get in touch with you, we will get in touch with you. This is not just something where you deposit information and no one's listening. This is an active listening platform. I get an email every single time that someone posts on there. I get a comment, I get another email. There's a like, I get that back. And so it's not just me listening, I, I do not do this by myself. This is a citywide initiative, um, currently involving Norwich Community Development Corporation, Planning and Zoning, and then other city officials and departments. We'll begin adding additional projects as we move forward with the platform. Um, so please, uh, get involved. Share your thoughts. Let us know, how can we best make this opportunity of Community Investment Fund 2030, the best opportunity, the best use of those funds? We need your, we need your voice. We need your, your, your feedback. So I'll leave it there. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
$875 million over five years.
It's a lot of money. Alright, um, my name is Rashawn Hughes. I am the Director of Training and Workforce Development at a Health Education Center here in Norwich. Um, so we talked a lot about, um, our programs. We talked about the CHW program. So I'm just gonna go a little bit more in-depth into it. Um, so we have Ferna, she's a CHW student taking a class right now. And, uh, she will be done in a couple of weeks. And Cynthia is a graduate from our program and you could s- A couple of programs. And you can see, you can see the great work that she's doing. She's really utilizing her certification to the best that she can to service her community. So definitely, good job Cynthia. And, uh, thank you for the pastor for, uh, holding this space for us. Um, so CHWs are, uh, community health workers. They are trusted members of the community. Um, what that means is the people in the community trust these community health workers. So there's probably gonna be a lot more disclosure. There's a lot more understanding on the behalf of the, uh, community health worker. And the community health worker has a cultural lens where they're able to basically assess and get information from the clients that the clients may not give to healthcare professionals, right? So they may not be as forthcoming with healthcare professionals when it comes to the things that they're dealing with. So they're much more able to disclose what they're going on uh, with trusted community health workers. So they're able to tell you if, you know, they need access to food, if they need access to mental health services. A lot of healthcare professionals are only working in one specific sphere of care, which is either mental health or physical health. But they have no idea what kinda resources are available in the community to take care of other needs like clothing, food, housing. That's where CHWs come in. And I couldn't help but listen into these two ladies' stories and think, how would their situation be improved if they had a CHW working with them, right? I really believe that their situation would definitely have been improved. So the, um, the CHW program consists of a 90-hour curriculum that is approved by the state of Connecticut. Um, and it also involves a, uh, 30-hour practicum, which Ferna's right now doing her practicum. We have a program called Healthy Beginnings that operates out of Wyndham Hospital, where we, uh, we take pregnant, pregnant women that, um, that are about to give birth and we connect them with a community health worker, right? Right at the beginning, assess what they're going to need after they give birth. And then we just continue to follow them, access their needs. We do home visits, right? Because a lot of community members really don't know what they have access to, right? They're used to getting the, um, they're used to getting, you know, um, mistreated by individuals. So we had a, a mom who was living in a, in an apartment and she was complaining about the mold in her, her bathroom, right? So she would call the landlord to complain about the mold and the landlord wouldn't do anything. It just took one call from a community health worker to say, listen, this lady has mold in her apartment, what can you do about it, right? Sometimes it takes somebody with a certification or can speak the language that the person, the, uh, the landlord can speak. You know, that's how things get done. So that's definitely one of the, uh, programs that we offer. And, uh, it's, it's been definitely beneficial. You can see the work, all the work that Cynthia has put in. Um, and the STIR certification is, uh, with the Department of Public Health. And also to that, CHWs are required to, uh, to recertify every three years, which means that they are supposed to do continuing education units. So they're supposed to constantly brush up on their skills. So their skills are never gonna get blunted. Um, in addition to that, we have the Medical Interpreter Program, which I hope that you're going to join in, right? Um, so we do a lot of CPR and AED work in the community, specifically communities that are notoriously underserved. That's why we started this program with the Haitian community to get them the CPR and AED certification. As well as Spanish-speaking individuals, and that's where she was there at the Founder 66. Yeah, so, yeah, full circle, yep. So we did a CPR AED event at the, um, at Founder 66. And then we put in a plug for our Medical Interpreter Program. So with the Medical Interpreter Program, this is for people that are bilingual that need, um, structured education to, to provide medical interpreter services in hospitals, in shelters, in community service providers. Um, so what happens is a 60 hours and it also includes a three-hour practicum. Um, at the end of the, uh, the class, you are eligible to take the Nationwide Certification Exam. And then you're certified to be a medical interpreter. And I'm telling you, medical interpreters make a lot of money. They make more money than I do. So I got the students that's graduated from my class and they make more money than I do. And they also can work for themselves. They could be independent contractors, right? So financial autonomy is something that we all want, right? And they can just get that just by basically passing our class. Um, so that is another program that we offer. We also offer the CPR and AED program. I think one of the things that's unique about our program that we offer for CPR and AED is we can offer it in Spanish, right? And not that many people can offer CPR in Spanish. So the videos are in Spanish, um, our AEDs are in Spanish. And, uh, I don't speak Spanish, obviously. But we provide an interpreter that can definitely help with that, with that language barrier. So ahead, we're really all about creating relationships with communities, right? So I'm very comfortable with the relationship with the Haitian community that, that I have now. Because before that, before I met Ferna, before I met Cynthia, we would go into, um, St. Vincent's de Paul Shelter and we would see, you know, Haitian women come in and they wouldn't talk to us, right? And I think it's for good reason, right? Because minorities are notoriously oppressed and sometimes you have to put on that guard to protect yourself. Once Cynthia came into my office, it was a God sent, right? She just opened the door for the Haitian community and basically allowed us entry to, to work with the community and build up a relationship with them. So, um, yeah, that's pretty much it. And we also offer assist suicide prevention. I'll leave my cards in the back if anybody's interested. Uh, yes, so we, as a nonprofit, we're, we're trying to collect money so we can, um, provide services for people. So we have Given Tuesday that's coming up right now, which we are collecting donations. You can go to our website, healtheducationcenter.org and you can definitely, uh, volunteer, donate your, uh, your money to, um, to our organization. Thank you. Oh, and put in Greenville in the comment section, so we're- Yeah, I do, I do. So put in Greenville if you're gonna donate, put in Greenville so we can track the, the, the type of people that's giving money. Thank you.
Uh, hi, everyone. I'm John Turbin. I'm from Norwich Public Schools. I'm the Family Engagement Supervisor. Uh, there are 10 family engagement people across the district, one at each school. Uh, we're part of the Equity Department, which means if you call us, there's gonna be smiles and like happy faces on everyone's face. And it's so weird to hear my voice coming from behind me. It's really bizarre. I have no idea how any of you guys like did not comment on this. It's really, really weird. Uh, I am not used to this. Anyways, um, but what we really try to do in our department uh, is really make equity our goal and to reach out to all of our families, all 3,423 students that we have signed up, uh, from pre-K to eighth grade, uh, here in Norwich. And one of the things that we're really excited about and we've been doing since last year is we are going to your house. We are knocking on doors, we're doing home visits where we really want to get to know the good, the bad and the ugly about everything. Because our department is a big on being liaisons and helping and showing- and showing families that there is someone in their corner. And at every single school, if you press the number three after you dial into either Mahan, Bishop, Kelly, wherever, NFA doesn't count, they're, they're their own little entity. But if, if they're anywhere underneath, we are here to listen and to help. And to do so, we've done hundreds of home visits last year, helping our pre-K kids entering to kindergarten, our fifth graders into sixth, and then our kids leaving Norwich Public Schools and entering into high school. And with that being said, one thing that we've been hearing from a lot of our families is questions, not knowing where to, what to do, where to turn. And with that in mind, we have really started and jump-started our resource guide that we have that's now up to 30 pages. It was 21, then we boosted it up to 23, and now it's up to 30 pages. And we are there to, again, be in your corner, act as a liaison to help with whatever needs you have. And one thing to keep in mind too is the people that you're going to talk to, we're gonna sit down, we're going to listen, we are going to help. And if you have a neighbor that needs help, ask the question for the neighbor, right? Don't think of it as just something for yourself. We wanna help everyone in Norwich, regardless of whether or not they're at a specific school. We wanna help because that's our job. That's equity, right? Many of these panelists have been to our schools, parent-teacher conferences were last week, or, you know, two, three days ago. I hope any of you with kids went. It's, it's a fun opportunity to sit down, actually see the classroom, see where the block area is. It's just a lot of fun. And for you guys to just know, we are listening. We, we do have open, we are trying to open our ears to the things and to the needs of our community. We have begun to really notice the need for Haitian Creole speakers in Norwich Public Schools. So just this summer, we hired someone in registration who is, who's able to speak Creole, who's able to talk to our families to help guide them into coming into the Norwich Public Schools family and to know the paperwork and the bus routes, the pickup times, the drop-off times, and all that fun stuff, including hiring a new building secretary over at Wauquanique, who is not just speaks English and Creole. She also speaks Cape Verdean. She also speaks Spanish. And I'm pretty sure her Portuguese is passable. So, you know, she's like 500% better at speaking than I am. It's just impressive. Like each time I feel like I talk to her, she has another language that she's like learning. And it's something that, again, we're taking very, very seriously here in Norwich Public Schools. We are really trying to focus on small panels and workshops, really trying to get to know our families at each grade level, at each individual school. So keep an eye out for them. We're trying to keep them nice and small. So if you have questions, you can keep asking over and over and over again. But if you wanna help us, we do have a robust volunteer program at all of our schools that we would love to have you. If you wanna have some wholesome, amazing time, I always plug the Mobile Food Pantry every second Tuesday at Three Rivers. I'll repeat that, every second Tuesday at Three Rivers is the Mobile Food Pantry in which you meet the nicest people of all time. They are fantastic. It's overrun through the United Way. I will be there. It's this Wednesday, again, the Mobile Food Pantry at Three Rivers, United Way, please go, it's amazing. Our volunteer program, we're always looking for people. You can sign up for the sake of signing up. You can do all sorts of stuff. And it's also a great way, if you are considering entering into the education field, to get references, to understand, is this a great area for me to be in? You can do all sorts of work, from secretarial things to helping out in the cafeteria, to helping out at recess. It's a wonderful opportunity for you to see and be a part of, of the community. But really, at the end of the day, you know, what we really look for and we are striving for is just opening up dialogue. And so when you get those little event notifications, feel free to hit Respond, text right back. Someone will be on the other end. And we're here and we're trying to listen and doing everything possible to help your child become the person that you know that they can be and the person that we know that they're going to strive and just be wonderful and amazing. I'll be here for a little bit, answering any questions. If you have any suggestions, I'd like to hear that even more. So, thanks.
Well, hello, I guess some people did have to leave, but that's okay. I'm Debbie, I'm with the Norwich Bully Busters. We start going on 23 years, going strong. And we started 23 years ago around a kitchen table with some kids and some parents, around some major issues that were happening in Norwich. Our strength are our youth. A lot of our programs are developed or by the youth. They come, I can come up with all the ideas I want, but if it's not something they wanna do, they're not coming. I love the Founder 66. I just wish our city would invest in a building like that for our youth, cuz I'm thinking about what our youth could be doing if they had a building like that. And I get frustrated cuz I've been on a number of the community setting committees over the years, and they keep saying, they keep saying, and it doesn't happen. It doesn't happen. Hopefully someday, with all this money coming in, it will... I, I, I'm sorry, I've seen these papers before. I've seen these committees before. I would hope and pray they're gonna happen, but I have to believe it to see it. But in the meantime, we will continue doing the programs weekend for our youth. I don't do it alone. We do it in partnership with Norwich Youth and Family Services. That's where I got my start, start many years ago as a single mom raising two kids. I took a program called Voices for Family. Angelo and Leanne were my facilitators. I'd like to say that's where I got my start. They were around that kitchen table with me when we started this program, going on 23 years ago. And we're still going strong. We do a number of programs together. Our Summer GM program we partner with, that's a program for at-risk kids. They come in, we try to provide them some positive activities cuz that's a lot what these kids need. There's some positive activities, somebody in their corner, someone that's willing to step out. Like I said, I volunteered doing, doing this. The kids always ask me, you don't get paid? I said, no, you guys coming in the door is my payment. And I get told all the time that kids don't appreciate it. What are you doing this for? We used to host shows at the Y, there's music shows. Then they understand half the music. I know I was in trouble when they, they're coming in wearing earplugs, and I'm like, oh God, I'm in trouble. But we did a number of those shows at the Y. And I remember years ago, one of the cops was telling me, he said, you know what these kids are doing? They're not getting high on drugs, but they're getting higher off the adrenaline of the music. And I'm thinking, well, on a Friday night, if I have 100 kids in here just listening to music and having a good time, I choose that over the drugs on the streets, anytime. And some of those young people that were in, at those shows, they own businesses now. Jason from Strangebrew, Justin from Listellas, John from Brick and Basil. Cuz we gave them the opportunity, just a slight little opportunity, and they took and went with that. They're successful businessmen in the Norwich area. Recently, another young man, he came back, I talk about him often. He had dreams of doing different, being on theater. And he wrote up this proposal for this city agency a few years, many years back. He, he was part of a school program. He wrote up the proposal, he had his business plan, and they just overlooked him. They overlooked him. So I say, he comes to me, he said, what do you need? He says, I just need the space. I said, well, I'll get you the space. At the time, we were looking at the Salvation Army. I'll give you the space. And this young man, he was, he said, okay. He developed this theater program for at-risk kids and kids that were in group homes and all that stuff. Within a couple, that summer, he had a full-fledged program. He had a permission slips, he had the whole plan laid out. We were able to showcase a play called How the Dinosaurs Really Died. We performed it at Spirit of Broadway. And at the time, his parents weren't quite sure where he was going with this. He was a foster kid they adopted. And they weren't quite sure. They wanted to be a doctor or lawyer, but they saw he had the passion he had in theater. He continued, he produced three more programs, plays for us. He got a full-rite scholarship to SUNY Purchase in New York, and he's living his dreams on Broadway. And he's, he's been a stage manager at a number of shows and stop. One summer, we were able to take a group of kids to see this play on Broadway and seeing the eyes light up as they come on down in the Broadway play. Recently, he reached out to me. He's 30 years old now, which kind of blows me away. And he, he wanted to see me for his 30th birthday. And, and I think of all the people that he could have invited, when they tell me kids don't appreciate what you do for them, they do. Maybe not at the time, but they do eventually. And he just wanted me there, just to thank him. And he's continuing some of his work. He's, he's starting a theater program for kids out in Pennsylvania. So it's just giving those kids those little bit of tools and a little bit of hope and knowing someone is gonna reach out for them. And I, and another girl that was in my program about 10 years ago, she saw me at a gas station recently. She says, hey, Miss Debbie, you're from the Bully... I'm like, yeah. She says, I was in your program at the Salvation Army. I says, yep, I remember. She says, but I was bad. I was mean to you. And I'm like, yeah, you were. I said, no, I said, well, yeah, I said, but, but you kept letting me come back. You kept coming... She says, how come you kept... I said, well, you had enough people quitting on you. I was not gonna be one of them. And she just, she says, and she apologized for being bad to me. And she's now trying to, she's volunteering with my program. So this is just a handful of them that really need our help and our services. And we can do it. It's, you know, I, I hear talks, it costs money, it costs... We've been doing this on a shoestring budget for years. We have no funding. We have limited funding. We have great supporters and sponsors and stuff. But we've been blessed by the faith community giving us spaces to do our programs over the years. That's how we survive. But it's for the kids. And they gave me strength. This past summer, I had a tough summer. My dad was passing away. And it was a couple of times I didn't think I was gonna go into the program. But every time I go, went in, these kids were my heart. They were my rock. They, they, you know, sometimes they label these kids the throwaway kids, they're this at-risk kids. And they were my rock. They gave me the strength to continue. And I knew I had to be there for them. And it just, they got me through a tough summer, and I can't thank them enough for it. But, and I say this cuz I don't think the teachers and all that understand, sometimes our kids are going through a lot. They're coming in with a lot of baggage, a lot of struggles. Early this morning, I stopped at, there's a group home three houses up from City Hall, local group kids. They needed hairbrushes. You know, they had one hairbrush for six girls and clean towels. And so I rallied around a couple of people and dropped them off. But that's another conversation I'll have with DCF to find out why these girls, that don't have just basic needs, being met. But I say that, there's a lot of kids in our neighborhood and our area that are struggling with these things. And I know the city has to invest in businesses, and I get that. But they really gotta start investing with the youth. Thank God we got Norwich Youth and Family Services here and our Otis Library. But without that, I'm not sure what else what we have. You know, I will continue doing our programs. We run in a few after-school programs. We've got one through the ARPA grant. We're doing it over teachers, and the kids are studying different cultures. They're studying Japan and Russian and different countries that they asked us to study. So, but I will continue. But there's a lot of nonprofits that are doing the work. But I just wish our city would finally invest in a youth center that we need. We could do more work, but with limited space. And I keep talking, hearing, well, this new school bond goes through, we're gonna get one of the schools open. Well, that's a couple of years down the line. You know, even if this, when you say it's gonna happen, that's another, but what do our kids do in the meantime? Where do they go in the meantime? You know, we need more places and opportunities. The schools should be already open. You know, why, why do we gotta fight to get into a school? They should, they should have never been closed. So we're at Norwich Bully Busters. We're always looking for volunteers. We run on volunteers. And our message is kindness is magical, and it feels good.
Hello, my name is Tamir Kiper. And let me give y'all a little background about me. I'm originally from New York. My plan was only to move out here for a year. Seven and a half years later, I meet nice people like Sadie, Judy, Cynthia, and then I come along, Greenville Day. Originally, my son DJed when we was locked up in the house with COVID. My son had all of this talent. He's been to music school, he played piano. And I said, we're sitting at home wasting it with video games. The first opportunity that came with Mohegan Commons, our community day, I said, um, Sadie, will DJ? She said, are you sure? I said, of course. She said, we don't have money in the budget. I said, that's not why we're here. Me, living in this community on this complex, is enough for me to wanna give back and teach these kids. My original plan was, he has talent. I don't see a lot of these kids with a lot of that talent. Whether the parents can help it or if they are able to invest, no problem. You have kids like mine that was given that opportunity and he can teach, which is how we get back. It started with one thing, one day. And now we in El Shaddah Church. We started with the cleanup. Bill was there, Belle was there, we did that. Now we at Phase Two of that part. Where are we at with that part, Cynthia? We did the cleanup.
Phase Two is the building thing. Building storage space for the diaper van and food pantry back into the building. The pastor of this church has been driving since COVID, delivering food so that pantry wouldn't shut down so people don't have to come out. So he's been delivering. We wanna bring, take that burden off of his shoulders and build storage. We're gonna be working with.
Hartford Healthcare with the bank.
Hartford Healthcare and.
The diaper bank. Mm-hmm. St. Joseph Church.
The food pantry over there to help us, we design some space. We're also doing a diaper van, making space for diaper van. So, right now, phase one is complete, where we had tremendous amount of help from the community. That we had been two days cleanup. It was done in an hour and a half on day one. And we're like, okay, let's clean up some other places that we were thinking about cleaning up. So that was, that was that, you know, amazing work, talking about team-like people coming together for a cause. Phase two, like I said, is the building space. I'll be coming, we'll be coming up with a date with the pastor to, to put some people together to build shelves for storage. Space three, which is pretty much complete, which is the management space on how we're going to manage the diaper van and servicing, who we're gonna service, how we're gonna service stuff, and things like that. That's almost done. We have, the pastor and nephew, nephew are working on that. So really, right now, today, the two causes that I'm passionate about is the health education center. We set giving Tuesday, but you can actually go on their website and give anytime. Just donate, and we bill on there, so we can help, so we can keep them out. And then also, the charging space to get people to sign up, say, hey, I know how to tool a hammer or something like that. I don't know, because hammer goes like this.
Volunteer services.
Yeah, volunteer services, so helping us build this food pantry, get the storage space opened up and so that January, we meet our goal for January. Another thing that's come out of all of this that's been going on in the community with the development of the, is the Greenville Neighborhood Committee. A lot of people had asked, is this an organization or is this something different, a park set apart? It's just a group of citizens that live in the neighborhood, that care and love their neighborhood and wanna see a change. Because of the Greenville Day, a lot of people was like, oh, you're not from Greenville? Nobody's from Greenville. And we're like, nobody's from Greenville. Everybody's from Greenville.
Greenville is out here.
It's like, everybody knows of Greenville, but nobody can say that there's a pinpoint, a person of contact for Greenville. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So there's not like a, there wasn't a pinpoint or a person of contact for Greenville. And that's what Tamir, Judy, myself, Sadie has done, is really formulate not one person of contact, but an energy of contact, an energy that it does, you don't have to see me, you don't have to see Tamir, you don't have to see Judy, to get electrified by that energy. You know, we're, we're in the back. We're doing it. What did you say to me the other day? Cindy, you get around, right? So we want that energy to get around, you know, that energy about loving your community, loving Norwich again. You say best, water.
We need to start watering our flower. I came here, I'm from New York. So she's a big city girl. You're right. And I also have plans, big plans. Nothing that other cities are not doing. What I'm upset about is why we're not doing that here in our small town. We have the funding. We have the people that is interested in doing it. We need more people to volunteer in our community. They said this is Rose City. I wanna see our rose flower, I mean, water. I mean, I wanna see our garden grow. I just wanna see it. I've never seen that part of life here, but I keep being told this is a big city. It's to be like New York. I'm sorry to say this, but if you turn, if you blink too quick in a downtown area, you will miss it. And I'm not understanding why that is. It don't have to be that way. I just think we need to water our rose. Let's bring life back here. Let's look like we're interested in our community and what our community can do for the people who live here, our residents. That's what I'm interested in. I know that's why I'm in it cohortically. I have boys, and to hear what we offer in Norwich, I think is beautiful. I do think we need a boys and girls town. We need something for these teens so that these shootings will stop happening downtown. For whatever reason that they're happening, we need them to stop. And I think if we bring in things in our community, like the El Shadda Church and programs in here, our community sense that these kids don't have to feel that way. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I have a comment from a grandmother, a parent, a grandmother that's also a guardian for her grandchild. And the grandchild is my, is my own ten-year-old that I was talking about, my little CPR lifesaver ten-year-old. That's his, that's her grandbaby. So I'm gonna let the grandma talk for a little bit because she had a comment real quick that she wanted to say in regards to the, yup, in the community.
I see a grandmother, I guess six, six, seven boys here.
She has six, she's a grandmother, and she has six grandkids here. Three of them are in school. The other three are zero, four. So she was saying that her kids, her grandboys are in sports. And them go, this year, two of them are at Kelly or one is at Kelly? One of them transitioned to Kelly this year. And what she's finding as a problem as a grandparent is that when they have home games at Kelly, Kelly will supply transportation for the kids to go back home. When they have away games, there's no transportation where she has to go and pick them up. And she's like, she's a grandparent. She works over forty hours a week. And at nighttime, she can't see to go to wherever country that they're playing games in. She didn't say all that. I added some extra, please. And she, her second comment was, even though you don't see that many Haitians here, when you see one Haitian, you see many Haitians because that one Haitian is gonna share the information little, one by one, to all the other community members. So please do not be alarmed if you don't see that many people from the community here. She said, she also said, as a foreigner, you might not see us coming to certain meetings. I think we had spoke about voting and things like that. It's because, as a foreigner, she's the, they're the ones that are taking on the weekend shifts, taking on the overnight shifts, the shifts that other people don't want. But because they are the foreigners, they take those shifts because they need to feed their family. This is a leader. Her name is G, okay? When you see her, she hides sometimes, but she's a community leader in, in our community. She's able to advocate for people, advocate for the youth, advocate for women. Nice. She is saying that it's not only during election season that she should be seeing her community leaders, but at least once or twice or three times a year so that they can have a, build a relationship and they can know who is this person and they can feel comfortable to share with that, with that community leader. It's not only once during election time to be seen, but really to feel free to come out into the churches, come out into the community, to bring information into our community anytime, several times a year if possible. That's it. That's it. And thank you. I wanna say thank you to everybody who stayed past a lot of time. I believe that this was a successful, successful event. I wanna say thank you to everybody who showed up. There's some people that showed up I did not think or expect was gonna be coming or even staying as long as they did. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Thank you, Pedro, for staying the whole event. You, all the community leaders, community members that showed up today to bring this information back home to your community, to your smaller community units, to let them know that there are resources here in Norwich and that they can have access to those resources and not to be afraid, and that the leaders on top are working to fill that gap. But unless they show up and say, and tell their story and say, this is my problem, this is my problem, they're not gonna be able to make any changes that's going to help us. Because someone stood up today and made a comment, the Director of Human Services said, you know what? Our assessments are going to be in Haitian Creole, and I'm gonna make sure of that. So that's the power, the magnitude of these town hall meetings, that you don't, you're not going to see someone behind a desk and they don't have time because they're on appointments, you know, so they might not be able to see you. They might not be able to call you back, you know, 'cause they're busy. Things are happening. This is the area where everybody's on the same playing field. We're all equal here in this room. Nobody's higher than anybody. We're all here to serve each other as a whole community. And that takes two parts, not just from our leaders, but also us as the constituents. We have a responsibility to ourselves, to our community, and to our future community. You know, the future that we're, the community we're gonna leave behind. So thank you once again, everybody, for showing up. There's refreshments. There's drinks. Do not leave without grabbing a bottle of water or something. Please, please, please. Please network. Please get up, talk to each other, and network, please.